Call the meeting to our, this is a meeting, the Camden Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health being held in the Town Hall's auditorium on April 16th, 2024. This meeting will be conducted in person and remotely using the video technology. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his book with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone recording the meeting other than ourselves?
Just in.
So this meeting, we're going to meet here for a period of time. We're going to adjourn to executive session and we'll return back up here to the advisory committee meeting, but that portion won't be on Zoom and we'll adjourn from the advisory committee.
Well, the advisory committee will use our Zoom meeting, yes.
Are they going to Zoom?
Well, I figure we'll leave our Zoom running and that way people will see the advisory here. Because we're about transparency.
What? What did you say?
Transparency, you know.
Waldorf and Staller. I just think that their posting said it'll be in person only.
Okay.
Anyhow, we'll be back here around seven o'clock. First item on the agenda, we have some minutes, March 18th of 2024, the regular session. Boy, how are those polls doing, Don? Boy, I have a big report out of it.
Okay.
Is it sawed off at the knees?
Advisory committee was here, reviewed the warrant. The board got a quote from the tie-in bond to do the condition assessment for in person. We didn't do anything with that, did we?
No.
We closed the warrant. Food permit, one day food permit.
Sweet Babu.
Sweet Babu.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session minutes of March 18th, 2024. This is negotiations with the police.
Superseded by more recent ones anyhow, so motion to approve without release.
In the second paragraph, did we agree?
To that?
Or did it come later that we?
It came later.
Okay.
It came later. Because we took out.
Yeah, there was so many back and forths.
Right, we took out.
Yeah. Okay, second.
All in favor? All right, next item on the agenda is the water district's funding. The treasurer is here to give us some words of wisdom, thoughts on that.
Well, I was asked to come here, so I'm not exactly sure what your question is, but once we can figure it out.
Yeah, I had asked that we bring Dick in, especially since we had talked about splitting the funding for the water district into two halves, one that would require an override, sorry, one that would require a debt exclusion and one that would not. And with the first part of funding in the, and although the ARPA seems to be a constant moving number, unfortunately in the wrong direction. And you know, John had talked about possibly reaching out to tie-in bond to see if there was anything new on the phase A, phase B numbers. If we're looking at phase A to be, phase A to be a number of 1.2 in the worst case, Craig, you think? Pump house improvements?
Yes, it was two stages.
1.2, was that sufficient, we think, for first?
1.2 for the pump station.
For first phase?
Yeah. Not including adding services.
To the seven homes?
We need a tighter number for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I had requested that there's split.
But the 1.2 did include a 20% contingency.
Yes.
So, yeah.
So that's solid.
So we have, right now, we're dropping to, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, we're down into the 360s, 370s on ARPA?
I think that's where it's going to land.
So if you were saying that worst case, you were looking at 900, you know, and we're thinking it hopefully be less.
What's the second phase going to cost? The second article?
Well, I think if, John, correct me if I'm wrong, what was the total project at 3.4?
3.5.
3.4, 3.5.
Yeah.
That's the numbers they're supposed to give us, 48 a week.
So say you were financing 2.3 then for phase, phase B.
Okay, so, all right, so you need 800 for phase one and 2.3 for phase two.
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah, 800 to 900 for phase one, depending on how much is left in ARPA.
Yeah.
Do you need both of those sums of money before the fall town meeting?
No.
You need the first one?
Yes.
To go to the pump house expansion?
Yes.
You really don't need the, what would the second number be standalone? I'm sorry, I'm not writing this down, so.
2.2, 2.3-ish?
I thought that was everything, no?
No. 3.5 would be like?
3.5 is everything, 2.2 is, okay, so 2.2 is the final.
2.2 is the expansion of the district, yeah.
So the 800 is easy. I'm sorry, easy to fund, easy to finance, easy to do with state house notes if we can't do it all in one year. We also have 1.8 in stabilization, something like that. And stabilization is designed exactly for these type of things. That would make perfect sense to me. I would probably just do a, just do the first one this time with a authorization to borrow period. And I know this is a political question, that's not what my expertise is, but I would leave the second one off until the fall. Even at raising another $2 million, I would never bond for that if that was the only thing we would bond for. It costs 40 grand to go out and bond and state house notes are so easy to get, we can roll them over, just like we used to do with a fire truck back in the days when we only put like 100,000 a year toward it, we would have notes for five years, just renew them every year, our credit is fine, so that's not a big deal. And one of the advantages of long-term borrowing is when you know what the rates are, you can sometimes get a better rate. I don't see that market changing for a couple of years to that people aren't going to commit to a long-term low rate. Nobody knows what interest rates are doing. So I'm not sure you need a debt exclusion for this. You know, if you're, if you're going to do $2 million over five years, $400,000 a year, that's well within our capacity without doing any debt exclusion, you wouldn't have to go to a ballot question.
Well, we're under kind of a, John, jump in if you, you were at the meeting also. We're on kind of, I won't say a notice, but a strong advisory, if you will, from the DEP during our meeting, that this needed to be addressed with positive work by the town.
Wow.
So, but without any money coming from the state, of course.
I would like to think, sorry, Dick, I'd like to think that doing the pump house expansion to start is positive movement because we're going to be, we're going to be progressing, so.
I think that's, that's how we presented it too. Well, that's how we presented it to Dan.
Right.
You know, he said, you need to be proactive. And the point, and the thing John remembers, us connecting the current houses that were easy to connect to the line.
Existing system.
That were already on Scantix, so speak with the line running through.
Oh, okay, yes, if they're just hookups, then yeah.
Right, I mean, which we've experienced, that's not terribly expensive. But as the water commissioner has said, they're running into some severe issues that are going to manifest with their equipment. And any expansion is going to tax what they have right now.
We've got to do the pump.
Right, so we have to do.
I'm taking your word for the fact that that's just absolutely a given.
Now, based on the testing requirements, the expansion of the district is kind of a given also.
Exactly. You know, I'm sure that they're not going to get any more lax in their, in their requirements.
Right.
You know, so, but, you know, as Craig said, you know, we make, we make that, the commitment to do the pump house deal, we can do that without taxing us, taxing ourselves terribly, without putting ourselves in jeopardy at least. Whether, the only disadvantage with the fall debt exclusion is you'd have to special, you have to schedule a special election and it's going to cost 1,500 bucks.
Right. And the turnout looks special, if you will.
It does look special, if you will. I don't, it said, I don't see needing a debt exclusion for that if you're going to pay for that over three to five years.
Well, my other question would be, like you said, you can fit it inside there, but does that constrain your ability to do something else because are we getting up into narrowing what we have available in the levy limit?
We were a little over a million last year.
Right, so now we're talking like the money for the, for phase A and then potentially keeping phase B inside the levy limit, would we be talking about 700 out of that million?
Not in a year, don't you? Well, you're, nah, I don't see that.
You know, say you wanted to do the first thing to 900 in three years.
Yeah.
Knock it out and then potentially 400 a year for phase B.
Yeah, you're not taking, you're not taking into account the stabilization money, which would reduce that quite a bit.
It could.
It could, and that's a sensible kind of thing to spend it on.
Let me ask a dumb question. And you talk about extending that debt over three years, but what, you know, does that include the project's going to wrap up in this year? So say we do the pump house, pump station upgrade, but it's done within the calendar year, how can we spread that out over three years?
I just have to borrow for July 1st. You know, we, whatever I don't borrow has to go on the tax rate. So let's say we spend a million dollars and we do it before the end of the year. As long as we have a borrowing authorization, then it's a policy decision in this room on how much to borrow and for how long a period. The town meeting authorization doesn't constrain us through the specifics of the borrowing. It allows us to make those terms.
How do we pay a contractor if we're not borrowing?
Oh, we got cash, that's easy.
Okay.
Cash is.
We borrow to pay ourselves back?
Huh?
We would borrow to pay ourselves back?
Don't confuse appropriation with cash.
Okay.
We got plenty of cash, that's not a problem. And if we needed to borrow on a state house note, I can get it done in 30 days, that's not a big deal. And right now, I got, you know, general funds got over $2 million in it and taxes aren't due for another two weeks. So don't confuse cash with, with appropriations and tax rate, what has to go on the tax rate. You know, if, if it's, if the senior senate proposal were to fly and we entered into bonding for that, it might be worthwhile looking at putting both projects together into a bond, but this project alone doesn't justify a bond.
Right, good. I just think how things are changing.
Why wouldn't we do it all together?
I think we'd have, well, we could, after, if we got two positive votes, I think that then we could look at authorizing the treasurer to investigate one general purpose bond.
You know, whatever, if it fails well in phase two, why wouldn't?
Oh, I think we talked about that before to get a last meeting to possibly get a better price on the work.
Right, that's what I suggested.
Right.
Instead of breaking it up.
The reason I like putting it, putting the second vote off to the fall is we're always smarter on what our composition is in the fall. You know, we know what we've got for free cash, you know, we have an idea of what the tax rate's going to be, so we can make better decisions on what we have to do then.
Well, let me ask you this, though, I mean, the authorization doesn't, is up to a certain number. Right now, I know Brian is working on a couple of water grants, maybe even the one-stop that could potentially be used towards PFAS mitigation.
Sure.
So by the time we actually go out to spend it, or even while we're spending it, we could get a grant in that would knock off some of the money we need to reimburse, so.
Say we were go, the, the Don's point, say we're to put everything into the one lump sum for the water district expansion, 3.5 million, would that need a debt exclusion?
Need? I guess it depends. It kind of depends on the rate you're spending it at. It's not just the appropriation. I guess it's a pretty big number not to do with that, not to having that exclusion. Again, let's, if it's 3.5, let's say we take, say we take a million on the stabilization, you know, it's still two and a half million dollars, that's $500,000 a year for, for five years. That's half our excess levy capacity, so that's a little high risk. It's a little high risk.
And I think my other point before was that if we bring that, if that's a question on the ballot, all are eggs in one basket. And then we can't even do the pump house expansion if it fails at the ballot.
I definitely agree with you, if you're going to go for the debt exclusion, I would only do, I would do it as two articles and not put the debt exclusion on the first one. You can always come back. Again, we're smarter in the fall, we have new information, even if it fails. I think you can make a moral case for bringing up, bringing back to the people because we know more in the fall than we, than we do in the spring. And.
I think the big thing that we have to think about too is, you know, we know the pump station upgrades are going to happen relatively fast. But the, the expansion in the district could be out in, you know, 25. So that's a whole nother year out.
Well, we're working on the 25.
Sorry, 26, 26.
You're thinking you might not get it done by July 1st of 25.
There's a possibility.
Yeah, but it doesn't really matter.
Right.
You know, an article like this, there's no fiscal year requirement to it. And if, if it happens to be, you don't start the job until July, then that's when, when we're you're out to borrow. And which is kind of nice because we can make a dent in the pump house monies and be closer to zero before we start the expansion monies.
Right, I mean, I think the part about phase A is that the potential is there to mitigate some of the increased testing costs as well. You know, if we connect the other seven, eight homes on Scannick, we relieve the, gosh, I think $2,500 a year per house testing charge.
Dick, if we have, if we have an exclusion that says three and a half million dollars, right, and we do phase one first, okay, do you have to borrow the three and a half million in, or could you borrow in increments?
As you go.
I can still borrow in increments and the only thing that goes on the debt exclusion form is what I've actually borrowed, not what is authorized.
Right, right, so the town authorized you by three and a half million, if by some weird chance the bid comes in at 3 million, you can only borrow 3 million, I think you're right.
But I'm not sure politically, I suggest making it all one article.
That's a double cap.
Similar to the five-year road thing, even though it was authorized for 2 million, you only borrowed 400 a year, pay has to go, yeah.
Yeah, but what happens if, if fall comes and you, the other two and a half million doesn't pass?
Right.
What happens if you, you don't get your debt exclusion?
Yeah.
Well, then you can come back at least for the phase A.
You don't need the exclusion for phase A and it sounds like phase A is mission critical, so why are you putting it in jeopardy?
Everything hinges on phase A.
Yeah, you can't do phase B without phase A.
Right.
And you can't satisfy DEP without doing something, and phase A is something. If the voters turn down phase A, you're not going to be in a good negotiating position with the government.
Here's the other thing, I think the water commissioner has made the point, even if we didn't have the PFAS and the expansion, they would have been coming to the town inhale saying, look, we need an upgrade to the facility.
It's time.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
So this is just, this is the cost of doing town business. We upgrade and we keep our stuff running good.
So my, my, my next question is, do we leave phase B on the warrant or bring it back in the fall as a fresh thing?
You got two choices, you can do it, you got three choices. You can do it now without the debt exclusion, you can do it, do it with a debt exclusion now, or you can wait till the fall. I guess.
If we wait till the fall, we might have to do a special meeting.
Special election, yeah. Yeah, it's possible. 1,500 bucks, like I said. I'm afraid if you ask for the big number as one, it's going to be rough.
Yeah. And if people don't understand that, it's not an upfront borrow, you know, it's as needed to complete the project, right, over the course.
Yeah, they're going to wonder what affects the tax rate, we'll have to figure that out and all that, but I just think it'd probably be easier to get approval if you ask for phase A and warn them about phase B.
At a later time?
In, in the fall. Again, that's just my take on it, but.
That's a tough decision.
It's a bold little decision, yeah.
May help that we have a grant, excuse me, requested for the small disadvantaged community grant, that's one that's already out there. And I just got a copy of the one that's going to go up for, it's called Community One-Stop for Growth Grant. I have to review, review the copy, the engineering firm sent that to me today, send them back. They'll put that in force. How long it takes to get, it's beyond my knowledge.
Okay, so Brian, so right now the warrant says what? What does the warrant say?
So the first article is for phase, what you're calling phase A, the pump house upgrades in connecting the, the seven, seven homes, 10 homes within the existing district. The next article is the, the borrowing for the expansion of the district, that's the one that's currently debt excluded. And then the third article related to the water district is the physical expansion of the, the boundary.
Adopting a map.
Of this Antifa Water District.
The first article has borrowing but no debt exclusion, right?
Correct.
But you have a warrant, you have an election question.
Yep.
For the second article.
For the second article.
So we'd have to take that off, take off the second article.
You don't have to, you don't even have to decide, you can leave it on the warrant.
Take no action.
And take no action.
And just explain.
And just explain.
I want to talk about the elect at the ballot now.
You can leave it on there, it just doesn't get counted.
Right.
It's just like if any of the other ones that are on the ballot, if the senior senate doesn't pass, it's still on the ballot, they just don't count it. I mean, it's cleaner if it's not there, Don, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. So basically, Dick was here to explain our different funding options and, you know.
I think we're not going to do phase B under this fiscal year. So putting it off could be a benefit to us with grant information and, you know, setting us up for down the road for maybe a lower price.
Yeah, it's going to make it easier to sell if you can come in and say we got half a million in grant money.
I do agree with leaving it on so we can explain, hey, this is what it looks like preliminary, we won't know until the time comes, a little closer.
There may be a need in the fall to do some adjustment to the testing number.
Right.
As we know what's left in the district, et cetera. And if any new requirements coming, when they take effect, yeah.
The government just issued the percentage of PFAS dropped by like, I don't know.
Have to save it on.
20 parts per trillion to four parts per trillion.
Right.
It's not going to go anywhere.
It's not going away.
Anything else I can help you boys with?
Nope, coming back at, at 7:00.
Yeah, I'm going to go down and make sure the advisory's got what they need.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
So we're going to go with phase one.
Phase one's definitely got to happen.
Phase one, explain phase two, leave the things on the ballot.
Do we want to adopt the map if phase two is just an explanation?
We should adopt the map.
Why not adopt the map?
As well, right?
I'm asking.
Yeah, we should adopt the map.
We should adopt the map.
Just in preparation, just so.
But if the map is formally adopted, does that give DEP something to say, well, now you formally adopted this new district?
But I think.
All we're doing is testing, we're still testing inside that district, which is fine.
Yeah.
I think we really got to look at our testing number going forward, I'm afraid we may not have enough in there. If we take those seven homes out, if we get phase A through, that may help you the rest of the.
It would offset a little bit more.
Did you have a sense of, if this passes that town meeting, is this a project, the pump house work that could be done in the summer?
I wouldn't think so. What do you think, John, could that, pump house be done this summer, you think, if we get a funding for it July 1st?
We got bidding to go, that's.
Right, I mean, it's, we leave it up to the engineer to do all that stuff, I mean, have they said that they were hopeful that we can get this done as soon as funding is ready? We don't know.
We were checking out, is there something that could be done in calendar, 24, you know, you have six months and.
We can talk about it tomorrow.
Okay.
Like I say, if there was a chance, Craig, the testing is, is it August, November, I know it's every quarter, potentially you might be able to start knocking off a couple quarters in next year.
For some reason, like April-ish, I mean, it runs a problem, and then maybe June, July, August.
What times of year?
July.
All right, highway superintendent contract. The highway superintendent here.
Hey, Mark, good evening.
Mark, appreciate you coming in on your week off.
This is different.
What's the issue?
Now we turn the bright light on, actually.
No issue, so. Basically, we have.
Here's a cookie you can leave.
You weren't kidding about the cookies, so. There's some language in, in my current contract and also the union's current contract about the potential of revisiting or opening up discussions on year two and year three of our contracts if the CPI is over 3% as of February. So we did it last year and we're just here, I'm here again, this year to see if the board would, would open up discussions on, on adjusting the salary by salary. I understand that the advisory had come up with a 3.5 COLA for non-bargained employees. I think what sets myself and my department aside, apart from, and this, and again, I do not want to take away anything at all from any of the bargained or un-bargained employees in town, but what sets us apart, me apart, is scheduling, I mean, on-call 24/7 winters, basically, you know, I live here, I put in a good day's work and I think, you know, that shows in our recognition of our roads during the winter and even, you know, otherwise, get a lot of compliments, no matter what time of year it is. So I think while everybody's talking about 3.5% from last, say, March, I don't, I think what people aren't talking about is since 2020, we are at 19 and a half percent. And I think my opinion is that we may have some, some catching up to do, I don't believe that we'll ever, you know, match that, I don't expect to match it. But I'm here tonight to respectfully ask the board if they would consider 5% on my contract for, for the third year. And I don't know how this would work, I don't know that I would expect a, an answer even tonight, I would, this is kind of a first for me, I think last time we did it in executive session or last year. So I'm here to just throw that out there. I know typically, pre-COVID, you know, and really what it all boils down to is the, is the pandemic, I mean, pre-COVID, you know, the annual, the average annual was two and a half, employees were getting two and a half, three, three and a half, and I think if we average out since the pandemic, I think, you know, we're, we should be a little bit higher than that. And I don't think that there's anybody in this room that could argue that, that they're not feeling the effects of the pandemic and. the pandemic and how that affected our, you know, economy and everything else. So that's just my.
One point I will bring to the board is that if you look at section six, the amended contract, it looks like there was a, we adjusted the number for the base salary for the second year, but didn't carry the math through for year three. So as Mark said, the board voted to adjust the base salary for year two, which should have necessitated year three to go up to the same negotiated amount that was in the prior contract, 2.5%. And if you look at these numbers here, you'll see that if you treat it the way it's written there, it's a 1% bump from two to three going by the contract. Don, you see what I mean? That if two adjusted, three should have floated up basically by the same amount.
Instead of this number here?
Yeah, the 102 is actually not.
102.45.
What it should have been, right? And actually, what we get into with the same error, if you will, was in the meeting contract. That year three was not properly adjusted.
What are you suggesting?
I'm saying that needed to be fixed at least. If we were funding markets strictly what was in the contract, he would have a 1% salary adjustment this year.
So we adjusted last year to two and a half percent, correct?
I would say it was, I'm looking at that, looks like it was.
Three.
We did 4%. We did 4% last year? I'm trying to see, and I'm looking at three amended contract right now.
It doesn't show that.
No, it doesn't. It just shows the dollar amount.
It was a 4% bump.
4%.
Right, 4%. So now, without adjusting year three, year three went up 1% from year two.
So you're saying we should have adjusted year three by 4% as well, or just?
No, no, by two and a half, by two and a half, yeah. Now, Mark threw in, looks like.
30.
Right. Then last year was 101, 79. That contract still had the 102, 415 that was originally negotiated when it was two and a half, two and a half, two and a half. So Mark, it looks like Mark, when he submitted his budget, threw in two and a half, even though the contract still has unfortunately the uncorrected number.
Right, what I submitted was two and a half off of year two's number.
Right.
And I, yeah, what John said.
But still in contract though.
This is, this should be, that's 4% there though, right?
So that to this was 4%, right?
Right.
Right. And then what was originally negotiated was a two and a half, two and a half, two and a half. So this should have, that number should have been, which I'm assuming is what that is right there. Oh, you moved. We got a touchscreen?
This, this number here.
The 102?
It should have been two and a half off of that.
Which it was originally, and then we, this is the amended.
And we went to four.
Right. So since this originally was two and a half, this year three was two and a half off of year two. Basically, we had, we had negotiated two and a half, two and a half, two and a half. And then we adjusted to a two and a half, four, two and a half, but didn't fix the number in the contract. Cause this year three should have been two and a half off the amended number.
Right, which we're gonna want.
Which I think is what Mark threw in there, basically. He took his current year.
So I did, I did submit several scenarios.
Yeah, so if you, you take the current number unadjusted and you add 5%, brings it to what the current number, that should have been adjusted at the 3.5% is.
Right, so his number in the contract that he submitted right there is two and a half for the, about 103, 914 is a two and a half bump. Which is what's in the current contract.
No.
Yeah.
Current contract is 102, right?
Sorry.
That's where the math was.
Right, that's where it's wrong.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so it should be the 103.
Right, cause both numbers should have been, when it was, this was fixed, that should have been.
Right, so if you do the 103, 914 plus 3.3.
That's what it says in his current contract. He's asking for a change from the two and a half in year three, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So that part settled. I think the number in the green, sorry, in the budget sheet as presented to the advisory conforms with the contract as it currently is. Now we have a request per the clause in the contract for the board to consider an adjustment from two and a half percent. Right now, we have the townless employees at three and a half.
Where's the 102?
From the original, when that was 90, if we go back to the non-amended, this was 97, probably, probably 99.
Probably 99.
Probably 102, yeah, yeah.
All right.
So what we're budgeted for that 103 number?
That's what, that's what it should be because that would be correct.
In the budget, you know, it's listed for 103.
Correct, that's what Doug sent out, yeah.
Doug sent that out? What did he send that out?
This afternoon.
Kind of got it.
So what are you suggesting?
Well, we have a, we've given the, for everyone, three and a half based on the advisory committee's thing. Mark's suggesting five.
Consumer price right now is 331.
You make some valid points about this, you know, he has 24/7, you know, different than, you're not salaried or you're not hourly per se.
So it would be an additional for that?
So basically, that might go up, whatever we say, 1%, or whatever. I think if I can start the bottom thing, I think Mark brings up a good point, that two and a half in light of us at least going to three and a half now, buddy, is probably not a, there, I could see him make a point for at least the two and a half being adjusted upward. The question is how far upward?
All right, give me a number.
Well, Mark gave us a number. He gave us a five, right?
So two and a half off of 103 is 104, 975. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You wanna go?
I'm sorry, I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I did the wrong number.
Yeah.
Plus 2.5%. That's not it. 103, 304.
So two and a half is.
I'll do that one first. So 5%, we're at that.
Off a whoop number.
The 103.
That's, that's not what he's asking. He's asking, no, he's asking for 5% off of the 101. Right now, it's, yeah. It's two and a half off of 101, he says it should be at least 5%.
See what that looks like?
Basically, it'd be twice the increase. What do you get there for? About 2.5.
So 101, 379.
Yeah, right, yeah, that was.
106.45.
Absolutely, yeah. Basically, it's double the increase, if you will. Angry, so what?
But if we, if we go with what we say is budgeted, what it should have been, 103, 914, that's the two and a half.
Right, so if you take that increase.
And you add, you add our 3.5% that we're giving everybody else, comes out to this number roughly.
But he's not asking for that. He's saying, take the 2.5%, throw that away, make it three points. We're saying make it 3.5 because everybody got 3.5.
He's asking for five.
He's saying, okay, throw the two and a half away, make it five. Not five on top of.
Take five off of that.
No. Add, yeah, add 5% to that. Which I think you said was the 106.
That's what that is.
Yeah, the 106.
379, plus 5%. Is that 106?
Yeah, right.
But my, my point is, he should be at 103, 914 right now?
Per the contract, yes.
103, 914. Plus.
Which represents a 2.5, right.
The math was wrong.
Right, cause it should have been there.
Yeah.
Now, if we say everyone in the town hall got 3.5, that number would be down at a 104, something.
103.
That's 5%, yeah.
No, that's, that's 2.5 off of what it should be.
Yeah, but that's not actually 2.5, that's like a total of 5.1 because you're 2.5 year compound.
Right.
Right. We're saying, he's asking for year three to be a 5% bump.
So.
Do I do five after that?
That's what, yes. So what was your original, 106 something? Right.
That I'm okay with. I just, I feel we.
You can't do five off of that.
Right.
No, cause that's 7.5.
Okay, right. Right.
Well, my point is he should be here because of due to our error.
Two and a half.
Right.
Right, at two and a half.
Right.
Right.
For next year, that's what it would be, and he's saying that's not enough increase.
Jesus. You have a motion.
Are we agreeing with his contention that, okay, big year, year three of the contract will represent a 5% increase?
Yes, off the 101, 370.
Off the 101.
I mean, your argument was pretty persuasive. I haven't heard you over your mouth yet, but you're really doing great out there, Mark.
Yes, off the 101.
So I guess we're, are we moving an amendment to the contract, the current contract? Would the highway superintendent, that year three will represent a 5% increase from year two?
Right. Yes.
I'll second that.
No, you made the.
You made the motion, I, I second that.
Fine.
Any further discussion?
How do we deal with death? Now we gotta tell advisory.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
You know about the paper towels?
What?
Yes, I told you before, when it snows and my street is wet, you come back with the paper towels.
Right.
You got that down, right? North Road gets nothing.
I don't think it's too much to ask.
Pregnant, no special treatment on North Road, right? Yeah. Okay, can I, while we got Mark here, I know you talked about all the extra money coming through. Can we schedule, Mark, for a update on the construction schedule for next year?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not taking your time, but let's put you in for a week or something from now.
And I'm hoping by then to, to have a first draft of, you know, this year's road projects to include all of that money.
Yeah, right.
All of that money.
Sure.
We just found out there's another, and if you looked at the apportionments, well, it's a rural roadway kind of funding. And it's, it's interesting how they, you know, how the formula they use because, you know, we, we got a lot more money than bigger communities, so.
Go ahead.
It's a good thing. 115, so.
You can come back to it.
Yeah.
So maybe, I don't know, Brian, you want a minute for next Monday or the Monday after?
Plus five.
Well, do you look at your schedule and see what we got on there already? Okay.
Sure.
Does that have next Monday even enough time, or you want another week?
Maybe the following Monday.
Following Monday, so, yeah.
Okay.
And like I said, it would be just the first draft of, of the roads we can talk about.
Yeah, but I mean, you definitely wanna get it out there so we don't wanna drag it out too long.
No, no, not at all. And I will say that the state offices have come full circle, they're working really good together as far as, as far as the state aid goes and all of this. They're, they're really allowing us to get things started earlier and.
Holy crap.
So, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
How's the big dig going?
As far as I know, it's going well. You know, they're, I don't think it's gonna be the full two weeks that they expected. I mean, I, I think they're gonna be done in a couple days.
They've got good weather.
Yeah, very well. So they got the structure in on summer. I thought they were gonna come from the other way, but they're moving right along. And from what I saw today, traffic was moving, I, I wasn't through there at the real busy times, but.
I mean, and they, the trucks they have at the other end, I mean, they got every vehicle they own down by the gas station, you know.
Yeah, that didn't help with National Grid.
Can't pull me there.
Thing. And I like those pictures, by the way, too. They're, they're shoring.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Slideshow on our website. There'd be a slideshow on our website. Name the poll, it'd be a contest.
You win cookies.
Kind of like the penta hydrants.
Right.
All right, what do we got next? We got the highway union people over here. Good evening.
Seats warm for you.
Flying solo today?
Yes, yep. So I'd like to thank you guys for meeting with me. And I know you may be looking at this as a pay increase for a position of skilled laborer, truck driver, but I believe this group of guys is much more than that. We're skilled equipment operators, pretty good mechanics. And I feel like the work that the four of us do for this town is, is a lot. And if you look at the surrounding areas.
Page 17.
What an equipment operator or mechanic would make is, is a lot higher than what we're making right now. And I would like to piggyback on some of the things that Mark said. I feel like you guys have been, you know, fair with the raises that we've been given in the past. But I feel like we are still behind where we should be. So I would like to respectfully ask for a 7% increase.
All right, so quickly, I'll just step in. If you look at the contract, we see that the same math thing didn't happen. You can see that the one, now it shows like a 1% or, you guys, Craig showed.
It should be there.
If it had been two and a half off of 30, 40, it would be up to 31, 15. Which I think is the number that Mark probably used in his figures, since it was in the contract already. So the last contract had a 5% increase, a 4% increase, and then two and a half. And you're making the point that the two and a half is a little low? And you're looking for some adjustment to that?
Yeah, I think our hourly wage right now, if you compare it to other towns, other municipalities.
Did you bring any of that in with you?
No.
I think, Your Honor, that's hearsay. I think that's hearsay, Your Honor.
It's, it's hard.
It's hard to quantify.
Because there's a lot of classifications.
And bigger departments, smaller department, right.
Right.
So this, this number, this number should be what?
A 3, 1.
That number's correct.
Yeah, next one.
Next one down should be this.
Two and a half off of that would be 31, 16.
31, 16.
And that's a two, two and a half percent increase.
That's two, yeah, that's a two and a half percent increase.
And is that what Mark put in for?
I believe he said he did, yes.
Okay. Now, what are you looking for?
Seven.
So seven off of the 31, 16?
No, seven off of the 40.
30, 40, 30, 40.
So like, it's almost, did it work math, it's a $2.20 maybe?
32, 52.
Yeah.
We are gonna have a position opening up, some of the women retirees. And I feel that that increase would help get a great candidate to fill that position.
That's a 5%.
Well, I think we should do the same that we did for Mark and the boys. Which is five.
Five.
Five, what we can do. We would have to replace them for Mark, so, okay.
Okay.
Have a motion.
Second.
Well, I'll make a motion to re-adjust. The amended highway union contract, 230305, for year three, represent a 5% increase, which would bring that number to, Craig, you said?
Oh, jeez, I just had it.
31, 92.
31, 92.
Okay, 31, 92.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Try and save.
He's back, all right.
Just if I may, through the chair, would you like me to?
Yes.
Readjust?
Yes.
All of these?
Yes.
And have them, I can't have them into the floor tonight, but before the end of the week.
You got, you got forty minutes.
You got forty minutes.
I can, I can try.
You're not putting one in overtime, though.
Okay. I can, uh, when would you like them back? Forty minutes, forty minutes? I'll make, I'll go over them.
Go to the bathroom.
You can probably, I mean, you know, you're, you know, your new number. Why don't you, you could go downstairs and tell Doug that right now.
Your number?
Right, yeah. Right, that gives him that one at least.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, because you get different, different, you know.
I just meant I could go.
I would, I would say actually, not to do the math, but you had last year's highway payroll. And it went up two and a half percent off of this year. That increase just roughly doubled then, basically. That would give them a, a pretty good ballpark of what it is, because I mean.
Two and a half and two and a half.
Right, yeah, right.
Take, take two and a half off of what you gave, you gave, you put two and a half in? You put two and a half in when you gave it initially.
So that was the contract increase.
Oh, right.
Yeah. So that increase just doubled. Yeah.
Just do another two and a half for them.
Yeah, just double the increase.
Close enough for that.
Yes, absolutely.
Sure.
Close enough for government work.
And Don would know.
Thank you. You choose on this, right?
Exactly. Is that what you always said? Yeah, it's fine, yeah.
Okay, so we have a final, uh, want to do the reserve officer first? Let's do the reserve officer.
Yeah, that's what he had in there for.
Yeah, so we just.
Seven thousand, so now it's porking, went a porking pot, roughly, yeah. So I have a schedule, Don.
Good evening. This is Kyle Cappucci.
Hi, Kyle.
Kyle, being brought forward to the Board of Selectmen for an appointment to reserve officer. Kyle comes to us as a Western New England campus police officer. And he has the Western Mass Reserve Academy.
Thank you.
And, um, he has some certifications to be, be a reserve officer. He has done the Bridge Academy with the exception of the 2,400 hours. But he's working over at the college and he's probably shy about 300 hours right now. So he's looking for some more work and he wants to get into a small town.
Does the college, do you work at the college, does hours count?
Yes, uh, for the campus police, yes.
And we don't have to pay for the bridge for him?
Uh, they do. They do.
They're paying for it.
They, they are. We don't, no, we don't, no, we don't, we do not, no, we, we're, we're done, hopefully. I have no other officers to bridge. Uh, I will give, gladly give Kyle hours towards his bridging. So we'll pay him that way, but we won't be actually paying for his bridge. And so he would like to get into a smaller community that's similar to Western New England and start policing and, and start a career doing that, too. And kind of be able, well, he also works with the Sheriff's Department. He's got some certifications through the Sheriff's Department, too. Kyle will, is scheduled for a medical tomorrow, as long as the appointment does go through. Uh, and then he'll have a field training program. Uh, they'll be offered out through us for whatever he's going to need. Any other certifications such as TASER, I think he still needs. And then he'll be able to hit the role of a full-time officer and then be able to go onto his own and help us out with filling shifts.
That was primarily role be filling vacant shifts? How would you work that into getting him his 300 hours?
So it's going to be just like our reserves. Top reserve gets a shift when it opens up, then you go to the bottom and.
And the reserves will rotate, right?
Reserves rotate just like our, uh, uh, other reserves, just like our full-time officers, correct? And he'll also actually have a chance to work road details, which he does not have.
It doesn't count for hours, though, right?
Excuse me?
Road details don't.
Does not count as patrol hours, no. Uh, he's been getting, and he, he, he'll probably make the hours at Western New England, uh, being on full-time anyway. But he would like to get into a different atmosphere of policing. And, and, and since it is very similar to the campus, he wants to get into a community.
How is it dealing with those unruly college students?
Not as bad as I thought it was going to be. Uh, they don't party as much as they did when I was their age, so.
They've all tamed up since then, right?
Yeah, it's amazing. They don't, nothing really on campus.
Or you're just keeping them in check?
Yeah, that's it. And they see me and they know it's going to happen. No, it's fine. It's a good time.
Do you still live in Westfield?
Uh, no, sorry, I live in Agua.
Okay, good, so you graduated from Westfield, that's all.
Okay, I went to Central High School and I also went to White Oak High School in Westfield.
You're in, Hills or Agua?
Feeding Hills, the same thing.
Oh, that's the first time I've heard that.
Ah.
You've heard that they're separate.
Yeah, usually there's a separation.
Yeah, I'd be like Chickapi, Aldenville, come on.
I'm from Hampshire, so. I'm not part of the whole Agua. We have a mayor, a county council, and officials use the Agua mayor, so therefore they're part of Agua.
Okay, well, you're, you're not wrong.
Yeah.
Remember the days when I used to live there, so.
Oh, then if you live in Feeding Hills, Feeding Hills is different than Agua.
See, he's already sucking off.
All right.
I have no questions for this business.
Thank you.
I defer the very senior man.
Got a motion?
Uh, yeah, move to appoint Kyle A.
Cappucco?
Cappucci.
Cappucci. To the reserve officer position, uh, under the direction of Chief Trombley and pending all medical and certifications required.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Congratulations, welcome.
Sorry to put you through the ringer like that, too.
All right.
Thank you.
You got, uh.
All right.
Final budget, warrant review?
Beat that to death. The only thing I have to share with the board is that we haven't really discussed the enterprise, uh, kind of conversation with Jane today. The third year of the McNamara contract had a pretty good bump in their hauling charge, probably 10%. So I think we are going to need some infusion from the tax levy, if you will, especially with the bag purchase this year.
Buy bags under me.
Same.
Yeah, anyhow, so we're probably looking.
The whole management thing.
Yeah, that number's probably going to, that's why we didn't murder her. Um, that number's probably going to be in the 15 range.
Put it on.
It is what it is. No, I mean, that's part of the motion and, uh, that may go down depending on what retained earnings show us. Uh, we're still waiting for the final number from Cliff. There may possibly be an adjustment in terms of bag costs, permit fees, we can all do that type of thing.
If I recall, wasn't the McNamara on a one-year contract, right? Because wasn't last year a one-year extension?
And we voted it and this year showed a, uh.
So do we need another?
From 175 to 195.
Do we need another extension or are we going to do like a longer term thing with them?
I think we voted that extension. We voted a three-year.
Did we vote a three-year? I thought we did a one-year.
No, three years.
Okay.
So we need a motion for it.
No, this is just an FYI. In the motion, when we get to do motions for the different things, the enterprise, which is the salary, operation, and potentially, uh, it's funded from salary.
Operation.
Costs are salary, operation, and miscellaneous to be funded by a combination of receipts, retained earning, and the tax levy.
We've had tax levy before.
We did ten, usually on a bag here.
Ten, yeah.
Yeah.
You've done, um, you mentioned before about increasing the price of the small bags. Do you think we need to increase, increase the price of the large bags?
That's what we're looking at. We'll run some numbers. I mean, I, you remember the big income type time is usually May to June when people renew their tags.
Right. And is that still sufficient?
That may be an option, too. It's a one-time charge. People don't really mind, okay, it went up $5.
Yeah.
The other thing I might want to bring to the board is we do have an option to potentially direct other revenue to that account. And it would suggest that we might look into the income we get from Amoresco goes directly to the general fund, except for the 5,000 for conservation. Would it be appropriate to think about the fact that
Put a couple of.
The operation of that does impact the surface, the paving area, whatever. Would it be appropriate to say, okay, we direct another 5, 10,000 from the, I think that number was, when they finally turn on, we're in the 130, 140 range.
Yeah, well, it is like 144, actually.
Some of that money might be directed towards the enterprise fund. I'm not sure if it can be done, but I think it'd be worth asking Brian to look into, is that something that can be done? I vote on the board.
How about the tower rental stuff?
That goes into the general fund. I think that number is in the 15 range or something like that.
Then some of that go out there because it's at the dump, right? I mean, at the transfer station.
Well, when we get into the tower thing, I really would like to, I want to say leverage that against the fact we're paying such a huge number for the tower to the same company on Commercial Drive. You know, we're getting 15 from them at the landfill. We're paying 60. Right, yeah, over there.
Hmm.
Right.
Something doesn't offset there.
That's what I'm saying. I think that's something.
The other question, I was just thinking crazy now, Doug, you're talking about trying to fund the transfer station through the enterprise, through the solar, but should we, can we divert some of that for water testing since it's coming from the landfill?
That's a possibility, too.
Just so.
I mean, they're all going to say that you're taking it out of the same pot because it goes to the general fund, which pays the butt, but.
Right.
There's a bit of a lag to it. If you could take it right then, but maybe you can until it's certified. I don't know.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Anyhow, in terms of the warrant, that was the only update I needed to think to provide.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you to take a quick picture with Kyle's regular Kyle Lee? Because I've been trying to put all of our part-time and full-time officers, we can just take a picture with everybody over here. Thank you. Trying to get everybody in there on a photo. I can, I can color one in for you. Smile on one, two, three. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Yeah, that's great. Good work for this.
Brian.
Oh, I was watching Don's cookie. Make sure.
One left, Kristen.
I had to put my cookie down and everything.
Well, there's another bag.
Okay, master plan committee appointment. Where is everybody? I'm here, Connie's here.
Oh, she showed up. Okay, so this, I think, required, because I don't think the loop was completed last time. And they're already meeting and I think we just need a formalization from the board. Do we have a formal list? Yes, you can.
It's in your folder.
Right.
In my folder, just.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to formally appoint the master plan committee to consist of Pat Coyne, Connie Witt, Don Davenport.
Who's that guy?
Yeah, no kidding.
I have to recuse myself.
Dan Blanchard and Joe Siviglia for a term not to exceed 10 years.
Is that okay, Connie?
It's, it's okay. 10 years.
The plan's good for 10 years. It's got to be 11, so they need to.
But it is moving along.
Yeah, good.
The company, I think, seems, um, they're very savvy. They know there's.
That's okay. But again, same thing, this will require posting and stuff like that. Do you think that, who's taking notes now? Pat does all the work?
Pat does. Pat's been taking notes and Dan has been putting it in Dropbox and things like that, so.
Okay, but now they need to be, Brian, is there going to be a, a separate section on the web, you know, in the government committee list then?
Should be.
We'll have to put that up there and then.
Good luck.
I would suggest, I would suggest to the board, if they need some clerical work, they could come to Temp Help.
I wasn't there when the, when the committee was appointed by the selectmen. I wanted to make sure.
I don't think, my point is, I don't think we actually closed the loop so we're doing that now, so. And if they need some clerical thing, Temp Help would be a problem.
Temp Help, we could say.
Okay.
Second with amendment to three years.
Well, isn't that not to exceed, same thing?
Now we have to vote on the amendment.
Do we? Second to amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
The amendment passes. Not to exceed three years. Thanks, Connie.
Well, now we have to vote on the motion, on the appointment. You used to vote the amendment.
Now you're voting on the appointment.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll never get this committee off the ground.
Ambulance contract. We're good with that? They just sent an email.
Did they?
Yeah.
What'd they say?
They said they're good with that.
Okay.
We do it the amendments.
Number seven, the packet.
Yeah, they're okay with that revision to the dollar math.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we just wanted some, some more details in there as to, you know, what they added.
They're good with that, they said. So what it does is it puts in the projected rebate and then, and then, uh,
All right.
The 15-month look back, which was in the other one, so.
Okay. And motion to approve the contract extension for Action Ambulance for the fiscal year '25.
Second.
You all in favor?
Aye. How many, how many do we need to sign? Just one or?
Yeah, I think so.
Say two, huh?
We have one clean one.
The other red marker?
Yeah, he's got the clean one there.
All right.
Running late here.
What's next? Oh, double poles.
You got some big updates there.
Oh, we have, we have.
Here's, here's another cookie, Don.
We have, we have big updates. The county administrator and myself had a very nice conversation with individuals from National Grid. And they provide us very interesting information. And the information is that, uh, we currently have 44 open, what they call open tickets for double poles, which means that they have done that, the, the, uh, National Grid has done their job. They've transferred the lines over. And, uh, they're waiting. The next person in line has to do their job. Thirty-two of those are Verizon and 12 of those are Charter. And once that happens, then it goes, we have, we've had access to the note, they call the dungeons, so we can see the ticket, we can see where it goes. And once that happens, when Verizon and Charter do that, they can remove the poles. Okay? The current job, then we have 100, then we have 270 draft double poles, which means that we, they're double poles or they're going to be double poles. But the ticket hasn't been opened to change, so they have the next person up that's due up to change.
So there's 270 that haven't even entered.
207, haven't entered the queue yet.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a lot of polls.
Uh, that's right. 105 of those are awaiting construction.
That's, I mean, we don't actually have 207 that.
Not yet, but by the end of it.
But then they're planned structure.
By April 30th, we'll have 207.
With what they're doing now.
The work should be completed by April 30th and it'll be 207.
That's incredible work on their part. You have to call to complain about your bill, nobody answers the phone, but.
It is incredible work on their part, right?
Right.
So that'll be 207. Now, I then thought to myself, well, do we assess those poles? And we do assess those.
We do, yeah.
And then I asked the assessor, well, if there's two poles, do we assess both of them? And they said, well, actually, if the pole is there on January 1st, we assess it. Well, we should assess it.
All right.
I don't know if they have or not. They have a vendor who does it. So they're going to look at those 44 poles and see if they should be assessed for taxes.
Our biggest bump on pole increase was the high-wire poles. They want to change all the metal.
Yeah, they are, yeah, yeah. So that's where we are on the, on the double poles.
Good.
So what, what takes Verizon and? And Comcast Charter so long to take care of portions of the?
I think the Charter is the last one to do it.
Yeah.
So they can't do it until Verizon does it.
Well, I ran into a guy today that told me Verizon's been having huge layoffs in their workers.
Exactly, exactly. Exactly, exactly.
Right, so personnel may be impacted by that.
Yeah, the National Grid person didn't want to say that, but I think her indication was that Verizon's an issue moving their parts of the poll. Because we're very happy to get the polls out of there.
Now, Craig, also, there is some fiber on the line. Who's responsible for moving the fiber?
Well, we have fiber. We have...
MBI.
MBI.
MBI does that.
And I'll show you, we have... Like, just get into this for a minute.
God, I knew I shouldn't ask that.
Bear with me here in a second. I got to get into it.
Motion going to executive session.
Come on.
We got to hear about Don's regularity.
This is my big thing. There she is. Where is she? No, 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 not now. There you go. This is what your tickets look like. Well, there you go. See? So over here, you have a little thing that says the job was made. So you have job closed. Those are all... They need to be taken down. Those are still being worked on. And then over here, at the bottom one, you have... Those are all waiting scheduling. Town of Hand and Fiber. Those polls are Hot Town of Hand and Fiber, but I don't know... That was the one that comes here? That MBI is it?
The MBI is the one that installed it. So during that middle mile initiative. It's a good point, like, is it there just in the open? I mean, we do have fiber coming to the building. There's fiber going to the police station, the dark fiber.
And I think also the schools have a fiber run going between the schools, too.
And I think that the fiber has its own line. I don't know if it's fiber or not.
Yeah, so here it says that Status 40 means that Town of Hand and Fiber indicates the tickets that are associated with poll replacements for the Town of Hand and Fiber applicators currently with National Grid for engineering approval.
What does that mean?
Well, I'm wondering if this is the new polls that Whip City Fiber might have said we need.
Oh, yeah, because it's pending order.
They're just... You don't have to put it on.
Hey, Brian, can you get that poll inspection report from Whip City? So we can kind of see if that's part of that?
Now, I must also point out that this does not show all the polls that aren't done, because I have three on my street that have been there for years. And I don't know how many are on other streets. There's no Road Drive on there. There's no... There's someone on Raven Drive on Sessions and down there. They're not showing you on there.
Are those considered private polls if they're so many feet off the...
No, no. No, those are right on the street. As a matter of fact, two, three, all three of them are marked for removal. They got the X on them, but there's... Looks like probably Verizon names still in there. Interesting poll.
Good work.
Anything else? Entertaining motion to go into executive session to discuss the police unit...
Selectment reports. So, Brian, do you have anything to...
Not pressing, no.
I hear that.
Selectment report.
I know kind of time crunch.
Well, no.
Thank you.
I gave my report and no polls.
Yeah, well done.
A good point.
Motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body with a return to open session.
Second.
I'll jump on I.
Put it down for I.
I agree with Scott.
So, what was that?
So we're going to go downstairs. We're going to come back up at 7:00 for the advisory committee.
When the advisor...
We've got 15 minutes. Let's go.
Let's go.
Last time we went on tour.
Stand for advisory, John? Stand for the advisory hearing or not?
Just put everybody in the waiting room.
Or not.
Up here.
Are you standing for the advisory?
We're going to go down to the executive session. All right.
Let's see how we did on. It won't be that long. Remind me to put it back on.
Which side do we... All right, everybody, if we could get started, please. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the public hearing for the advisory committee. We're going to review the articles that are to be brought before town meeting on May 13th. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review the articles and to receive input from members of the community. That input can be in the form of questions for either advisory committee or the proponents of the article, or it can be in the form of information to fill out some aspect of the article. We would ask you to keep your comments as focused as possible so that we stay on track and get through this in a reasonable period of time. If everybody... That's the wrong phrasing. Anybody who needs the articles, I believe there's some others over here on the table, unless they're gone.
They are gone.
They're gone. We're going to be reviewing the warrant as well as the budget, which is Article 2. Does anybody have any questions before we begin? All right. The Article 1 is the town reports, the standard article. Do we hear the town reports from the offices of the town? Anybody have any questions on that standard? Article 2 is the annual operating budget. Advisory has been working with the department heads over the past couple of months, developing the budget. We requested that they prepare a level service budget with a 3.5% COLA for those employees who are eligible for a COLA. The budget request as presented reflects those COLAs where applicable. There are a couple of lines where adjustments are yet to be made, and we'll explain those as we get to them. So what we'll do is we'll take Article 2, the budget, in order. 1.0 is the accountant. The total amount requested there, 72,985. 2.0 advisory committee, total advisory requested, $5,991. Board of Appeals, total request, $9,227. 4.0, the Board of Assessors, total request of $161,468. That, by the way, reflects an increase of four hours in the principal assessors.
No, clerical.
Excuse me, the clerical. A four-hour increase, which is why it's more than a 3.5% jump on that. 5.0, Building Department, total request, $140,868. 6.0, County Retirement, total amount billed to the town, $775,224. 7.0, Insurance, total insurance, $852,570. 8.0, Law and Claims, total requested amount, $75,000. 9.0, Moderator, total request, $100.
Get what you're paid for.
Something to be said for consistency there.
That's it.
10.0, Planning Board, total request, $40,376. 11.0, Board of Registars, total request, $21,932. 12.0, Selectmen, total request, $170,147. That request also includes a requested increase of five hours in the administrative assistant line. 13.0, Tax Collector, total requested amount, $89,886. 14.0, Town Clerk, total request, $99,197. 15.0, Town Report, total request, $3,600. 16.0, Treasurer, total request, $90,594. 17.0, Veterans Benefits, total request, $20,000. Town Administrator, 19.0, total request, $130,000. Total General Government Request, $2,759,165. 20.0, Academy Hall Maintenance, requested, $5,500. 21.0, Cemetery Commission, total request, $38,786. 22.0, Conservation Commission, total request, $42,776. Yes?
You not making any allowance for a higher tier?
I don't know that there was a request for an allowance, Ted. I think Barney... I think Barney had come before.
No, I'm not talking about... I'm talking about a conservation agent.
We had... No, there was no request for that. We had discussion about the likelihood of the need for a conservation agent, but because there is not a specific candidate or position at this point, we didn't put it in as, you know, to a certain extent, a speculative amount. But thank you for bringing that up, because we do know...
Who of us retiring is willing to do that?
Well, exactly. I mean, we do know that changes are coming and that there will be a need for, presumably for either a salaried position or contracted expense for those inspections. And I think what we'll have to do is see what happens after July 1st in terms of expenses and how you set it up as a contractor or what, and we'll take it up in the fall. But no, we're aware that there are going to be those changes and increased expenses. Just a question of the nature of those expenses and the amount. Thanks, Ted. 23.0, Transfer Station, total amount requested, $120,000. 24.0, School Building Repairs, total request, $15,000. 26.0, Library, total request, $204,105. 27.0, Town Events, total request, $3,500. 29.0, Office Equipment, total request, $117,500. 30.0, Parks and Rec, total request... There's a correction here. Line 30.2, Operating Expenses, incorrect. That line should be $15,000. That makes the total Parks and Rec request, $144,176. 32.0, Townhouse Maintenance, total request, $95,000. 34.0, Ambulance, total request, $329,138. Let's just take a quick moment here. Don, if you want to explain, it looks like the expense of the ambulance is going down, when in fact you've simply renegotiated the application of the rebate.
The extension of the contract was for three years. 3%, so it'd be $324,000. But they projected a rebate of $60,000 to us. So we asked them if they could fold in the rebate as part of our monthly charges, and they agreed to fold in 75% of it, leaving a base just in case we needed some or they could come up or down either way. So that lowered our monthly, our yearly payment to $329,138, which is ironically $4,000 less than it was the first year. Over the five-year period, every year has been less than the first year. So it's just... So we just have to fold it in rather than wait for the 15 months to get it back.
Right, so it looks like the expense is going down, when in fact it's...
But the rebate's being used.
It's being reallocated. Any questions on that? 35.0, Gasoline, total request, $60,500. 36.0, Street Lighting, total request, $30,000. 37.0, Council on Aging, total request, $208,605. 38.0, Senior Center, total request, $42,190. 39.0, Historical Commission, total request, $400. Making the correction for the Parks and Rec error, that makes the total general town service Moving on to Highway Department, 40.0, Superintendent Salary. We've been... We were just given a new number that was negotiated this evening on this. That number, 40.0, will be $106,448. 40.1, Departmental Payroll, we also have a new number there. That number will be $307,235. 41.0, Tree Warden, total request, $60,549. 42.0, Public Grounds, total request, $4,385. 43.0, Highway Maintenance, total highway maintenance request, $315,672. 44.0, General Highway Expense, total request, $18,300. 45.0, Snow and Ice Removal, total request/recommendation of advisory is $125,000. 46.0, Contract Services, total request, $63,700. 47.0, Other Highway Accounts, total request, $21,000. 48.0, Building Expenses, total request, $16,250. 49.0, this is a new line, Radio Lease Agreement, that's $10,000. That makes the total Highway Department request, $1,48,539. 50.0, Animal Inspection, we're going to insert the number in 50.2 for expenses, insert the number of $1,200. That makes the total request for animal inspection, $6,575. 51.0, Emergency Management, total request, $5,800. 51.5, Traffic Control, total request, $15,000. 52.0, Dog Officer, have to insert in 52.2, Dog Damage Fund, that'll be $500 in that line. That makes the total request, $15,124. 53.0, Fire Department, total requested, Fire Department is $427,536. 54.0...
That's in the last line, but didn't get the caption put in.
Oh, yes. Underneath EMS Supplies, you'll see there's a blank.
Training reimbursement.
We're going to... It's actually a training reimbursement line that we're going to reformat. The amount is correct. It's just that the descriptor isn't there. Let's see, Forest Fire Control, 54.0, is $1,800. 56.0, Board of Health, total request, $119,032. 56.5, Water District, total request, $14,000. 57.0, excuse me. You'll note that the general salaries line, 57.2, is even from last year to the request for this year. That number has been held flat because the police and Board of Selectmen are in negotiations, and that number will have to be revisited in the fall for whatever the amount is that's negotiated. For purposes of our budget, we're carrying the current general salary number, which makes You want to add something, or you want me to move on?
Which one do you want?
Police.
Please. We're currently in negotiation with the police. We have a tentative salary number, but we have a couple of items that we're seeking to be deadlocked on. Police have gotten 16 different increases and benefits in the contract. We're stuck on two, so I don't know when that number will be done.
So we may have it for town meeting, and we may not.
For the town meeting, we may have it.
Okay. But we don't have it tonight.
We don't have it for...
All right, and we're going to carry that number with the understanding it's going to be revised. We also have a discussion whether or not I think the board supports a new cruiser. We've had that on our... When... Some discussion about different ways to pay for your equipment.
Some discussion about different ways to pay for your equipment. I would like to present as well.
When, time-wise, when do you expect that?
This is right here?
Yeah, he's over here.
I think we decide, we'd like to take the cruiser out.
Well, Chief?
Could I say something? So I don't want to go against the board's decision, I just want to add that I've been made aware that cruisers will be going up between eight to ten thousand. And also, the chance of getting a cruiser at the town fall meeting, and looking at a 2025 or 2026. If we're to keep this in now, we pretty much have cruisers coming for the fall.
So that's a delay in delivery?
It just be, just because of, they're getting rid of the twenty fours.
The model year changes.
Coming in, changing, and to get that model, it's going to be more expensive, I have to go into that model. So I was hoping to get a twenty-four with this. That's the only dynamics there for me to change, probably be up a year or higher.
I think part of our consideration was that the last mileage report showed that we had one vehicle in the thirty thousands, four vehicles in the forty thousands, and one in sixty thousands. And with our projected usage, and I go back to that, where we're trying to keep these vehicles running at least a hundred, it just didn't seem imperative that we get the vehicle in this fiscal year. And that we couldn't revisit in the fall, perhaps with free cash. But right now, and I know the delivery issues the chief has brought up, but we're not talking about replacing a car with ninety or eighty thousand miles on it. It just, with everything going on, obviously bringing the dispatch number in this year, that'd be a balance.
So, for purposes of this evening, do we have a request for a cruiser or not?
I think the board would, you take the cruiser out of the requesting budget.
Maybe any discussion on the equipment?
Okay, well, I'm not gonna do the math as I sit here, but obviously that reduces the total request below the amount that's listed here. The sheets which are printed and distributed will have all these revisions in them, and hopefully it captures them accurately.
They might be right.
They might be right. Fifty-eight point zero, other police accounts, total request, four thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Not, I'm gonna skip over the total police, because that's incorrect. Fifty-nine point zero, police and fire communications, total request, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. Fifty-nine point one, this is another new line, this is regional dispatch. This is the dispatch that we share with Wilbraham, and that, Don?
Just a way of explanation, this is the fourth year of our grant, we're required to pay fifty percent. However, Wilbraham is adding, is hoping to add Belcher Town to the regional dispatch system. And the town administrator and I, and we're meeting next week, our board, to see if we can change the IMA, and to see if we can continue with our hundred percent grant. So we didn't leave the number in, but there may be a chance that we'll get reimbursements for that.
In the current year?
What?
In the current, or the coming year?
Yeah.
Well, that'd be good news. I mean, even the sixty-two, what's the number here, sixty-two, five is a reasonable, yeah, exactly. All right, Don, do you anticipate knowing that by town meeting, or is that too uncertain?
Too uncertain.
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna read the total protection number, because that's changed. Sixty-nine point zero, regional schools, the amount voted by the school committee, total eight million, three hundred forty thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. The local government debt, which consists of the high school bond and the police department bond, total debt, six hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Now, that brings the grand total to somewhere in the neighborhood of sixteen million, six hundred thousand. Gonna have to do the math to find out exactly where it is, but round figures, that's what we're looking at for a budget. Substantial increase, several new expenses. But we invite people to make suggestions, any place where we might be able to reduce expenses or save money, other than saying my taxes are too high, which isn't terribly productive. If you can point to something specific, we will, we will look at it as carefully as we can, and if there's money to be saved, then we'll try to do that. But as it stands right now, we think the budget that's been requested is, you know, is a reasonable budget. We'll be voting those numbers later this evening, and then submitting them to the printer for publishing and distribution to the town, the week before town meeting. Yes, Ted?
There was something on that insurance, about a hundred grand?
Well, it's a combination, it's a combination of, there's actually a couple of retirement buyouts that are included in that category. Those two people retiring, so they have time which will be bought out. There's also an increase, the health insurance, which has been one of the big drivers in recent years, actually is leveled this year, zero increase on the health insurance to the town on the premium. But because the town has shifted the percentage contribution, the town pays a larger percentage of the, of the premium than it used to, more people are participating in the health insurance plan as a result. So it's a combination of shifting the percentage, more people participating, and buyouts, retirement buyouts. That's why it's up that much. Anything else before we, before we leave the budget itself? No? Very good, moving on. Article three, prior year bills, if I understand it, we have none. Article four, the spending, the FY twenty-five spending limits for revolving funds. This is a, an article which is brought forward every year as a statutory authorization for those specified accounts. Any questions on that? No. Article five, the enterprise fund, transfer station. What, what number shall we be looking at this year?
Right now, looking over projected revenues, the fact that, you know, we see an increase in the shipping costs from our vendor, the time we have to buy bags for the coming year. I think if you carry the number of fifteen, we'll be able to refine that before town meeting. I'll work with the town accountant to see if there's any retained earnings that we can use towards that as well.
You say the bags, the bond bulk, obviously, and when, when the town buys the bags, is that good for what, like a couple of years?
Usually, but you stagger them, one year you're gonna buy the small bags, they'll carry you through two, three years, then the large bags the next year, two, three years.
Kind of even it out.
No bags.
Okay. And no groundwater pollution. And article six, community preservation. The, this is a request from the land trust to acquire some property up on North Road. The number that's, that's carried in here of one hundred and twenty-four, four, is different than the number that the community preservation committee had been working with. Community preservation met with the land trust, I don't know, a few weeks ago, and they told us that they could work with a number of one hundred and ten thousand. So one hundred and ten thousand is the number that the community preservation committee authorized as an amount not to exceed... So that, that's a request that, I don't know how much detail people want to get into tonight on, on that specific...
Just the wording, Doug. To purchase that parcel thrown within the shot of land trust, what does that?
Well, that's getting to some of the complexity, Rita. The way the land trust is structuring this, this object is different than what they've done in the past. There's a, there's a four-point something, acre parcel for sale. They're proposing, the land trust is purchasing, gonna purchase the entire piece, and then sell, subdivide it, sell half of it as a building lot for, you know, residential house. And the other would be sold to the town and used as a trailhead and parking area for access to Mountain Vision, which the town already has that conservation land up there. It also involves doing, and the land trust would be doing, you know, all this work, but it involves a land swap with the adjoining property owner to allow for a connection across the rear of that other property owner's piece. So there would be a, essentially, instead of being a right of way, it would actually be, you know, deeded right to that Mountain Vision property. But for the, you know, for our purposes, you know, it's an amount not to exceed one hundred and ten for the acquisition of that. And the reason it's phrased that way is because the land trust has to have the parcel after it's subdivided, they have to have it appraised. And that appraisal is what essentially sets the amount that can be paid for that piece of property. Yep. Anything further on that, Ted?
Is that a reasonable amount of money for that amount of land?
Well, you know, that's one of those, that's one of those things that... I think part of the reason that the appraisal is done is to sift through that. And I think the other is, is gonna be, what is the... What is the value of the other lot after that's subdivided and marketed? These are all questions for the land trust, I mean, I, you know, I'm not involved in it other than knowing what their proposal is. You know, and then that's why the amount not to exceed one hundred and ten was, that's the language, because it might end up being less than that. How much less, I, I don't know.
It just seems as tight as, with the budget going up significantly in some areas for a hundred and some thousand dollars or something, we're really not sure about it, just a little bit. What if we don't do it, is there any negative impact to the town if we don't do it?
Well, two things, one is this money comes out of the community preservation account, which is money that is already there, this, I have it somewhere, it's like four hundred and fifty thousand in that account right now. So it doesn't impact the tax rate, the tax bill, the money's already been, been raised through the annual assessments and the state matches. In terms of whether, whether or not the town, you know, there's an advantage or disadvantage to the town, that's a loaded question, I'm not even gonna try to answer, because everybody has an opinion on these, on these issues.
I don't understand why the town would have to buy the whole parcel if they're just interested in half. Why is the town on the hook to develop homes?
We're not, we're not, no, no, that's not, no, 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 that's, that's not the proposal. Forget that, that's not what the proposal is. The land trust buys the entire parcel, subdivides it, the town buys the piece that services the existing conservation land. We're not developing anything. The land trust would.
The land trust?
Which is not the town.
So they feel they, in order to get the property that they want, they need to purchase the whole property?
I don't, I don't want to speak for the land trust, but my understanding is, from what they told us, is that the current owner wants to sell it as one parcel, is not interested in subdividing it, in selling just the piece that we need for the access to the whole piece of property. Right? Anything else on that? Oh, there had, I may as well make mention of it, there had also been a request for CPA funds for a couple of windows in the library, right near the circulation desk. But the select board took up that request, it was for sixty-two hundred dollars. So that's gonna get paid for, out of the existing townhouse maintenance, I think. So that request as a CPA item went away. Article seven, conservation fund, I assume we'll do the standard thousand. Article eight, state highway, it's the standard, whatever the Commonwealth is gonna distribute, will accept. Same with article nine, library additional state aid. Article ten, assessors funding for state mandated programs. Do we have anybody here from assessors tonight?
Like, there were about twenty-six or twenty-eight, something like that.
It was sixteen. Sixteen. I have, based on our meeting with the board of selectmen a couple of weeks ago, when we first got a copy of the warrant articles, you had said, and I wrote it down, let me just find where it was. Yeah, it's, those articles are labeled differently now, so...
Yeah, sixteen, sixteen is the number I wrote down as well.
Yeah, it was article ten, it's not, yeah, it still is, okay. So I have a thousand for that.
So as far as we know, that's still a good number, everybody? Yes, okay, sixteen thousand for article ten. Article eleven, senior center expansion. Who wants to take this one? Don, you're on.
Chairman of the Building Committee. I've given this talk in terms of the history, going back, but anyway, we agree. Selectment appointed a committee in town to look into the needs of the Hampden Senior Center for the next fifty years, which is quite a son. But at any rate, we, the selectment appointed a committee, made up of townspeople, we've met for the last eighteen months, twice a month, gone over the needs of the senior center, the current obvious needs, and also looking forward to the expanded programs going down the road as you look for future needs. So we have a preliminary plan, which we'll be presenting at the town meeting. The budget, the estimates, professional estimates of the cost of the program would be six point six million dollars. And, but you look at the amount of money that is spent for the seniors in town, if you look at the council on aging in the, in the building, it's like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our sixteen million dollar budget, which is basically like one and a half percent of the town budget that's currently spent for the operation of the senior center. So we would, we'd need a two-thirds vote at the town, and then it would most likely go to a proposition, two and a half, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Don, the, maybe this is a question, maybe this is a question for the select board, but that, the referendum, the override vote, that'd be a majority vote? That'd be a majority vote?
Two-thirds at the town meeting, majority at the referendum.
Okay. I'm sure there'll be plenty of discussion at town meeting, but for purposes of tonight, does anybody need anything further on this?
What was the dollar amount?
Six point six. Gary?
Just as, we're having our second forum presentation at the senior center... Just as, we're having our second forum presentation at the Senior Center on April 30th. We've already had one forum, which was very well attended, but those who are interested to see what a year and a half's worth of work that the consultant has brought forward, will have a presentation showing the proposed renovations and expansion, starts at 6:00. So you can get a good idea of what we're going to propose at town.
You said April 30th?
April 30th.
I have a question. Does that dollar amount include fixtures, furniture, things of that nature?
Yes.
Oh, we're not doing it the way Wilbraham did it?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
No, we've discussed that in depth.
Any, thank you. Anything further?
They don't have any furniture?
Mary Ellen?
Are we going to get a financial analysis of how much this costs the average taxpayer?
Yes, yes.
Yes, there's been some preliminary discussion, but there's a lot of assumptions involved in that, like, you know, how much, you know, of a down payment we make, you know, what term is it borrowed over, what's the interest rate, you know, some pretty significant variables that have to be assumed. But there'll be, there'll be a number, a range.
If you come April 30th, we hope to have that number in a handout.
There you go. Anything else?
When everything is paid off, that project, so what happens to that money? It just gets rolled into your budget and you spend it on something else? Because it never really goes back to the taxpayer.
When it's a debt exclusion, Mary Ellen, it just, it stops getting raised.
Yeah.
When a bond gets paid off, it doesn't get taxed, it doesn't get raised and appropriated in the following year. So it's not like, it doesn't, it doesn't carry forward. The obligation to pay it goes away, so the obligation to raise it goes away.
But, so the taxpayer who was paying $150 doesn't get a reduction in that tax because he no longer has to pay for the thing.
The latest example?
Yes, Mary Ellen.
The latest example is the Green Meadows bond. So that was a 20-year bond, but it was $200,000 a year. By the last year, we barely noticed it was there. So when it went away, that lowered our levy limit, how much we could tax, but it was only $200,000, which seemed like a lot of money 20 years ago. But by the end of the bond, it doesn't. But it, no, it does actually go away when the debt's paid off. You just spend it on nothing else.
Over the, over the period of the bond, it gets swallowed up by all the other increases and expenses is what happens.
It's like, you know, when you're in the 30th year of your mortgage, it's nothing.
Can I convince people to find a way to borrow more at that time because they don't have that debt change?
That's true.
Anything else? Give us a preview of what's coming at town meeting. All right, thank you, Don. Article 12, Payment in Lieu of Taxes Agreement. This is one of the solar projects, this is, this is the authorization.
Request from the assessors for a different way, authorization from the state, and I think the change was caused by, right, basically, is different way to negotiate a pilot.
So this is, this is an authorization vote, not a money vote.
Could I just ask a question? Which mill road solar is this one?
This is 220 Mill.
220.
They originally, they want to change their, I think, their big tax personal property debt, and the legislation changed, and now they want to do a silence for the remaining 20 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Article 13, Scantic Valley Water District Improvements. Who wants to take this one?
So the next three articles are for Scantic Valley Water District. They're broken up into phases. This all stems from the contamination of the landfill 25 years ago. But now this EEP and EPA are legally related forever chemicals, or PFOS chemicals, in and around public water supplies, and they're really targeting municipalities that have transfer stations or close transfer stations. Because of that, they are requiring additional testing on homes within the district. If a positive hit of any of these forever chemicals was detected, it triggered quarter detection for every home in the district instead of annual testing. Those have increased our testing costs maybe to $150,000 a year now across the district. In recent news, within the last week, EPA has come out lowering the threshold over the next three years, I believe it is, from 20 parts per trillion down to four parts per trillion with PFOS chemicals. Because of that, they're looking for some type of obligation from the town to remedy these homes from their contamination. The best way to do that is to add them to the Scantic Valley Water District. The known water source will eliminate the future testing requirements for their chemicals. But in order to do that, first, the pump station needs to be upgraded to maintain the capacity. It's also old, so it is time for some repairs. The second part of the phase would be putting up 12, 20 homes, I believe it is, that are currently being tested for PFOS, and that would be an ongoing forever test if we didn't add them to the district. So we're, we're looking for the long-term solution to remedy those costs, you know, for the residents or the residents. The third part of the article is expanding the new draft for the local government to do the laundry.
Do you have a dollar figure for Article 14?
13 or 14?
13.
Well, 13, I thought you said it's 150 for testing costs.
No, no, no.
No. For Article 13, it would be just pump station improvements and put up some residential homes that are right on the district.
And that cost would be?
Roughly 1.2 million. But we're looking to use our other funds to offset some of that, so we might be looking for even a hundred thousand for that first phase to make the upgrades to sustain any improvement.
Craig, do you anticipate applying the balance of the ARPA funds to this project?
To Article 13, yes.
And that'll zero out the ARPA account?
Yeah. And there was also talk tonight that we might put off Article 14, because we may not cross that project in this fiscal year that we're coming up to.
If we were to, what would that dollar amount be?
Rough numbers are probably 2.3 million, maybe, 2.3 roughly.
That's for the expansion?
For the second phase, for the expansion to include the new 20-ish homes that we have.
But you're anticipating not taking action on Article 14 at the meeting?
We're anticipating not taking action.
Not taking action. Okay, and what about the extension article, Article 15?
15, we'll probably take action on that, that's just to increase the footprint. There's also possibilities that we'll have grant funding. We've applied for a couple of one-stop brands, we've put disadvantaged community grants, so we may have additional funding that if we do get it, we could start some of the other projects without spending any money.
But Article 15 is not a money article?
It's not a money article.
It's just a redrafting?
Location. We did the same thing when we expanded the district down Main Street to complete the four homes here.
Okay. So Article 13, you're looking at a $1.2 million total cost minus the ARPA dollars applied?
Yes, we have a more set figure.
Okay. And the Scantic Valley, Article 14, the expansion, probably doesn't do much good to talk about a number because it sounds like it's very much a ballpark at this point.
There's hard numbers, but that might change because of the fact we may get additional grant on the town.
Okay, then I'd prefer to keep that out of the discussion because all it does is muddy the waters. Okay, good. Anybody have any questions about those three articles?
What's the geography of this article? The current geography of it? What will it be? Like, on the map-wise geography, like, you want to know where it is?
Yeah.
Well, it currently goes up Scantic, and it contains houses all around the landfill. The new homes will go off a little bit off Cross Road and then down to, was it, South One, South One, somebody a couple houses, so just a little bit further down the road from where it is now. Look, going in this direction or not? No, it's going to be more for that end by the transfer station, not down Main Street.
Is there any projection, you know, of where this contamination goes to? I mean, what, what are the scientists saying about this pollution that we have and where it's going?
The pollution's everywhere. It's mainly from, there's a couple lawsuits right now with DuPont and, forgive me, I can't remember the other company, for 3M, for producing the Teflon coatings, Teflon materials that produce leachings into landfills particularly, or people buried it in their backyard. But primarily the reason we're responsible is because they're claiming it's coming from the transfer station, you know, with the leaching of it.
But is there a plume that's been identified? I mean, is it moving in any particular direction or what?
No, I don't believe so. It is possible that they may have, I don't have the knowledge of it.
It's not hard to cut and dry. We've had homes that absolutely no hits, the whole of the street hasn't hit. And since the EPA may have dropped them to the standard, it's including more. Unfortunately, with PFOS, it's used in everything, besides coatwear, anything, paperwork that has grease coatings on it. It's used everywhere.
All right, well, unfortunately, there's going to be more to come on water.
I just have one question if I could. The pump station is down gradient from the landfill. You've tested through there.
Yeah, we tested the pump, the pump house.
Every one thing is tested.
But yeah, it's clean, it's, had never had any hits.
So the, if you will, the stream will not mitigate or go down into the pump.
Yeah, and DEP is probably confident that in water, it's going to be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Just for an FYI, there's much documentation about damage to water supplies in other towns due to industrial solar, and which, which has become a big issue in this town as we are marking under a 10 project, it may be the other coming up. And there's a lot of information that was presented to the administration, to the folder of, I believe there's almost five towns that have sued the solar companies for poor installation, poor site.
I'm going to hold you right there because it's kind of getting off track from where...
Just another area of water poisoning in the water.
Thank you, understood. Article 16, Temporary Moratorium on Battery Energy Storage Systems.
Well, this is, this is going to be a no action, because the planning board hasn't been able, wasn't able to hold a hearing in enough time, they have a period of time to go, they have a period to go. In addition to that, the Attorney General's Office has ruled on several law powers not allowing batteries for storage things, but they do have a lot of bylaws, strong bylaws for replacement of it. And the, since the tracer lane decision, there's been a lot of, the Attorney General's Office has destroyed position against, against towns banning solar. Our bylaws currently don't have a battery energy storage system bylaw, which, the bylaws, if it's not in there, you can't have it. But the Attorney General says you can't ban these things from your town. So a lot of towns have been putting bylaws in. So the hope here is just to bring this attention to people, set up a bylaw committee, and hopefully to have something that the planning board can look at and come forward before the need of the fall town meeting. We're just implementing a very strong one, which protects their aquifer and also concerns about lithium battery storage and the fires and that, so it'll be a no action, just an information.
So this will be brought back at a future meeting? Article 17, Landfill Tower Lease.
Extension.
The current tower is extending the lease that's up there. Article 18, Fire Station Design. What do we have on that?
I'm on the fire station building committee. Much like the seniors that the Senior Center Building Committee did, they put RFQ out, the qualifications, fire station building committee did that, they're looking to hire an architect and do the next step in blueprinting. The number for that's going to be around $50,000.
Around or 50?
The quote was $50,000.
Okay. All right, any questions on that? Article 19, Funding for Hamden's 150th Anniversary Events.
We did 10,000 last year. There's been conversation on the board that we would perhaps take no action with just an explanation that we would like to keep doing this on a periodic basis to...
We're going to downsize, we're going to downsize the party, aren't we?
You can bring it back in.
No action?
That's what we're discussing at this point.
Article 20, Fiber Optic Committee Report.
This is just going to be informational on the fiber optic committee, how many numbers from the committee are listed, so let the community know that this initiative hasn't been designed and they're still looking into solutions. That's going to be up to the committee.
More to come. Article 20, Rita?
When you say come to the fall meeting with that, was that that huge amount of money though at the last meeting?
Well, I don't know what's going to happen. The committee's going to have to vote and decide on which, what they want to do.
My point is that in the past, the policy was to go to fall town meetings for very cleanup things, you know, set the tax rate, transfer to stabilization, that sort of thing. And now we're taking to town meeting money articles that are huge. And I'm wondering if we want to do that. If, I think the annual town meeting has a better representation, is what I'm saying.
It's interesting you make that point, Rita, because we've actually had some discussion about, and we still refer to it as the special town meeting. And it really is, it really has become a town meeting. I mean, it's part of the way the town does business now. But I mean, what you described is historically is correct. I mean, you know, it was a cleanup meeting, and now it's definitely not, it's more than that.
So are we, are we saying then we are headed in the direction of taking the articles?
One of the problems is, and I remember the good old days when you and I were on the stage and that's the way things were, and John's dad would say, no, we shouldn't be doing that kind of stuff in the special. The problem is, the budget climate now, we don't know anything in May. We have no idea what our free cash is, we have no idea what our state aid is. So we're continually having to say, let's do this in September when we're smarter, when we have more information to be, to be better prepared. So I think it's inevitable that the fall town meeting becomes a more regular town meeting.
But I mean, that's, that's for the board to decide. They control the warrant. Mary Ellen?
Yes, but if the fall is the more meaningful, what do we even need to spring one?
Our requirement is an annual town.
Yes, but it couldn't involve any annual town meeting?
Well, the problem is we have a, we wouldn't have a budget for July 1st. And so we'd be restricted to a 12-12 budget, which would make departments like Park and Rec very unhappy, seeing they spend most of their money in the summer. So yeah, it's logistically difficult.
Even logistics, the state law, that is still very clear that your annual town meeting has to happen prior to the start of the fiscal year, so and it is labeled such as the annual. We've had this debate over the years back when I served with John Spiker, about whether you, now you're opposite, is it town meeting part two? So I get all the arguments, Rita, and I'm the old school thought of this as well, and it's a little more difficult to swallow as moderator off his years later. But again, the housekeeping articles, the nature of the beast, I mean, if you look at the, the great general court can't even solve, set up a budget by the first of the fiscal year on their own.
the first of the fiscal year on their own. So you're kind of stuck with the family you got, but it's, it's how it's referred to, I think, would make this going forward, the argument more powerful, because it is not a special town meeting.
The, the other concern that I have is that it's difficult getting, getting people to come to town meeting. And when you have two town meetings, it's twice as difficult to get people coming to town meetings. So then you have a smaller group of people making decisions in the fall, perhaps, or maybe this, or, you know, it may vary. And I think that's a concern, because you want more people participating in democracy.
We, we do, but we can't make people care.
They told me that in the old days, that there were two ways to get people to town meeting, leash laws and liquor licenses. We'll fill the room. Or call the fire alarm.
Jim?
Can I add to what Rita said, and, and I agree with her, we've tried to, we've tried to keep the, in the past, tried to keep the fall town meetings specific. I think that what Rita was talking about was the introduction of new things, not, not necessarily things that have to be done because budget delays and state aid questions, but it's, it's what I would call is new initiatives. And I would like us to remain in that posture where new initiatives go into the annual town meeting.
The one thing that they're doing to mitigate that a little bit is putting it on the article and taking no, on the annual, taking no action and saying we may be talking about this in the fall. In the case of the second half of the water district possibly, or the fiber optic, so at least they're trying to give some fair warning at the annual. I give them credit for that at least, and I'll give them credit easy.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a legitimate concern, absolutely. But by the same token, the speed of everything has changed. I mean, we have to, we can't wait, sometimes we can't wait for 12 months for things to happen, so. Anything else on that issue? On to the pickup truck. Article 21, Pickup Truck for the Highway Department. What number are we carrying on this?
60,000.
60?
60.
This is replacing, Mark, I forgot, you told us which?
This is replacing 2012, front three, with 99,000. It's just under 100,000 miles.
So by the time you get it, Mark, how much, I mean, the delivery on these is not great, right?
I think they're getting better, but we're looking at four to six months. It's fall at the earliest.
Yeah. Okay. The one you, the one that you're replacing is operational, you don't expect it to go out of service?
It's just pretty much outlived, it's useful.
Yeah, it's, yeah. 99,000 hard, hard miles, so.
Yeah. Those are hard miles.
Yeah. Okay, any questions on the pickup truck? No. Article 22, Minutarg High School Capital Improvements. This is a request from the school district for, I get them confused, are these the switches or the?
Wireless access?
The wireless points.
I think the number we had from here was in the 40?
43,279.
It's the, the last number that we had, 43,279. With Wilbraham picking up the proportionate, you know.
There's just over 100,000, they're well over, like, I want to say maybe 180?
Yep.
Or thereabouts, it would be Wilbraham's contribution.
Maybe four times as much.
Article 23, Government Study Committee Report. Are we going to have an actual report from the Government Study Committee, or what, what do we anticipate there?
That's one of the questions, do we get to give an overview prior to warrant articles?
You got to talk down to the guy down the way.
Right.
Well, I mean, this is going to break into two parts. For example, we did have a, we had an overview report, an interim report back in November. So you've got the following questions after. So if the article warrant is structured by the selectmen, is designed to authorize a report, then that would be the vote. For example, if the vote came back negative not to hear your report, we would still be taking action on the questions that follow. So it, it really kind of, you know, so it's, each one is individual, so I would think that the voters would want to hear the report, but obviously, the vote has to happen first before you give the report.
I have a question. Articles 25 and 26, I'm grouping Article 24 through Article 27 sort of together, but Articles 24 and 25 are going to be voted on by the residents of the town on May 20th. So are we taking no action on Article 24, and, I'm sorry, 25 and 26, not 24 and 25? 25 and 26 are also questions.
It has to pass vote.
Has to pass vote.
It has to pass vote places.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my question.
It has to pass a town meeting and then a ballot.
And then the ballot, okay.
I do have a comment on that, because I think procedurally, we're getting ahead of the game. The charge of the committee was to give their report at the town meeting, not to act on it at this time. So I just think that having that, the charge to give a report at the May town meeting, and I think that putting the questions on right before we've even heard the report, and we're going to hear it then, I understand that, but I think procedurally, we're getting ahead of the game here.
I don't disagree with you, Eva. I was just wondering, I wasn't aware that you had to vote both the warrant articles at the annual and then, again, you know, give the citizens the right to, to vote on May 20th for it.
Do you not have the right to vote that citizens to? I don't think there's anything that says, hey, if we have a warrant article, we have to vote on it.
Hold on one second, hold on one second, let me, let me just, let me just back up for a minute here, bring people along who may not have this, the document in front of them. The, Article 23 is the Government Study Committee Report. The next five articles are, are articles which the Government Study Committee is opposing and which the select board has included on the warrant. That's the Eva's point about whether or not that's appropriate.
Their charge was to bring it to town meeting, not to the side of it prior to that, that was, so to me, it's just a procedural thing.
And, hold on one second, from, from the perspective of advisory, I mean, we, we make recommendations on the warrant, which is coming before town meeting. The, the composition of the, of the warrant is select, you know, it's the select board that makes that up, but it's the moderator that rules on whether or not an article is appropriately before town meeting. I don't want to make it more complicated than it needs to be, but I, I mean, it seems to me that what's happened is it's all been compressed into this one event. Which is a bit problematic, but Donna, what say you?
Our charge was to provide recommendations, issue a report with recommendations. Our recommendations are in the warrant article. And anyone interested in the methodology can look in the report, which there's some copies right there, between pages 10 and 19, there's an explanation, it's been vetted through the town attorney, which will see the proposed warrant article, and then once they go to the ballot, the ballot questions are included also.
But you don't need a ballot question for Article 24, which is to increase the board of selectmen?
No.
No, just the, just 25 and 26.
All right, so I, I'm not sure that it's going to serve us much.
No, I'm just asking for clarification.
Get into the details of each of the articles, other than to kind of highlight what the concerns are on, on both sides of the issue. I'm assuming there'll be plenty of discussion at town meeting on this.
Article 27.
That, you know, is, is not going to be voted on by the town on May 20th. It's just a matter of, do we want to allow for electronic voting at town meeting? You know, I, my only concern with that is how, you know, what's the IT situation at TWB right now? You know, is that something that we could possibly do without having to make some improvements? But I, you know, maybe my question is answered.
Hold on, hold on, I don't, I don't want to go down that road because it's much more detailed than we need for town.
No, sorry, okay.
The, it's a question of, you know, this is the article which is being brought to town meeting. Comments will be made, questions can be, can be asked. For our purposes tonight, everybody understand what it is that's coming before town meeting. That's the question.
And anyone that doesn't have the report, there's a couple copies up there, and hopefully the board may need to have a.
Well, it's on the town website, right, Donna? I mean, it's available, it's on the internet, it's on the internet, you can read it there.
Also available for those who don't want to invest the time in the report. So we're trying to make it easy to get the information out.
Jim?
Can I ask for clarification? Kathy, did you say that Article 24, 27, 26 will be ultimately subject to a ballot?
No, 25 and 26. I, my question was, why isn't 24? 25 and 26 turns the town clerk and consolidate the treasurer and the tax collector into one position. I would assume so, yes.
Yes.
The change from an elected to appointed, you have to move.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the procedure.
All right, any further questions, comments? Okay. Article 28, School Resource Officer. This is a.
$11,922.
A reimbursement, we actually make a reimbursement to Wilbraham for the current years, actually the past year's expenditure, this is, this is a lagging expense that we, we take care of. $11,922 is our portion of that expense. Article 29, Advisory Committee Reserve Fund, we didn't even talk about that, but I'm assuming we'll use the, the general 25,000 that we typically do. Article 30, General Stabilization Fund, it's too early to know what, if anything, will go into stabilization. Article 31, Reducing the Tax Rate, likewise, it's too early to know on that. That brings us to the end of the articles. That concludes the hearing, public hearing on the warrant. What advisory will do is we will now continue our meeting downstairs. We will review, re-review these issues and make, we'll vote each article for recommendations. As I indicated at the outset, this will go to the, go to the printer once we've got everything revised and refined for distribution in, in the times the week before town meeting. So unless anybody has any questions, that will conclude the hearing. Very good, thank you very much, everybody. Okay, Phase Two.